Good evening. This is our regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note, members of the public will have an opportunity at some point in the meeting to comment and ask questions. Be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand during the raise, using, excuse me, the raise hand button near the center of the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity or hate speech, or that relates to matters that are not before the Board, will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn? Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Announcements. Well, happy Hanukkah to those who celebrate it. Next week's meeting is our last of the year, fingers crossed. I don't anticipate any any special meetings or emergency anything. Our reorganization meeting in January is on the 6th at 7 o'clock. And so the Board knows, the officers and staff, so Tim and I and the Planning Office staff are working on a draft agenda for a a retreat of sorts, a legal briefing and orientation to be held in the first couple of months of next year. And this will be scheduled for a Saturday, you know, a couple hours, maybe two and a half hours. And and it will involve some briefing and information that we all need to understand from Jerry, a look ahead at the year, discussion of some procedural issues, just a general opportunity for Board question and answer. This is something that we've traditionally had every year, but have not had for the last couple of years. And so I'm looking forward to that. And once we have an agenda, a draft agenda pulled together, we'll circulate it to everyone so that, you know, you can suggest additional or ask questions, or, you know, before we finalize the agenda. You know, no big rush on that, but I wanted to let folks know to expect it maybe sometime later this month. Any other announcements from Board members or staff?
Just Louise, just at the nominating committee will be meeting before January, and we may need an extra member because Wanda was on the nominating committee, so you know, we'll have to replace her.
Okay, I will, thank you. I will talk to Tim. The committee appointments are always made in, by the Chair in consultation with the Vice Chair, so I'll get together with Tim in the next day or two and we'll, I'll give you a name.
Thank you.
And for, and we'll check, we'll check with the person that we're interested in. The, in case it's unclear to anybody, that this pro-Tim member would meet with the nominating committee, you know, once or twice, or whatever is the nominating committee's pleasure, Julia's Chair, to nominate a slate of Chair and Vice Chair for the Board for next year. So I think that all members of the Board, including alternates, are eligible to serve on all committees. So if you have an interest in serving on the nominating committee for the month of December, kick an email to Michael, or Carrie, or me, and so we'll, as soon as possible, and I'll let you know, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have minutes. We have three sets of minutes. We are doing our best to catch up with minutes, and thanks very much to Carrie and others on staff who I know are working to get us completely up to date. We have January 9, 2020, February 20, excuse me, February 18, and January 21, 2021. So we should probably take them one at a time, rather than all together, since certain members weren't on, or might have been missing for some of those meetings. Anyway, would someone like to move the January 9, 2020 minutes?
I have a suggestion on that.
Okay.
And a question on page, well, it's my printout, it's on page two, under hearings, trustees of Princeton University, the fifth line reads, Mr. La Place, fifth sentence, Mr. La Place stated that within his memorandum, he asked the applicant, period. Obviously, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I think
Right.
that you'd read, there's a period, and then Mr. La Place asked, should come out, so it would read, Mr. La Place stated that within his memorandum, he asked the applicant about how the circulation of traffic close to faculty and Harrison, et cetera. You see where I am?
Yes, thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Okay, and I saw some other hands up, too. Mr. Cohen and Ms. Capizoli?
I was just going to move adoption of the minutes.
And I was just gonna second.
Oh, excellent. Any other, any other edits or corrections? Okay, so moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Ms. Capizoli. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. February 18, 2020. Any comments or edits, corrections? Would someone like to move them?
I'll move them.
I'm sorry, I heard Mr. McGowan, I mean, Mr. McGowan, but I saw Mr. O'Donnell.
It's okay, I'll be moved.
It was so weird.
Yeah, I was still on mute.
Okay, so Mr. McGowan moves, Mr. O'Donnell seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. And the January 21, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Any corrections, edits? And if not, would someone move them, please?
I'll move them.
Moved by Mr. Oakman.
Second.
Did by Mr. Chow. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, thank you. Next, we have a resolution of approval related to legal services by Jerry Muller on litigation. This involves the Princeton Planning Board. Mr. Muller, you want to say anything at all about this?
Yes, this is litigation challenging the Board's approval of the Tiger facility. And we've gone through the usual hoops in terms of procedures. We're now in the briefing stage. Miss, Missenbaum through Bruce Affrin has submitted a lengthy brief. The university has a draft brief. I have a draft brief, which is quite a bit shorter, because I'm trying to, you know, I don't want to just repeat everything the university is saying, just rely on theirs, and just kind of emphasize a few points. So that's where we are. Our briefs are due in two weeks, and there's a reply brief, and we have oral argument scheduled for late January.
Okay. So we need to approve the resolution. Would someone like to move that? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Alan. So let's do a roll call for this, please, Carrie.
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Next up is a discussion for an ordinance referral from Council. This is ordinance number 2021-39, amending the Affordable Housing Overlay 1 zoning district. Michael circulated a memo and had some attachments. Mr. La Place, you want to introduce this?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see here, put up a little sketch. And what we have before you is a draft ordinance that has been referred by the Council to the Planning Board for consideration in terms of its consistency with the master plan. What this ordinance proposes, 2021-39, is to slightly expand the footprint or the area of the Affordable Housing Overlay 1 zone along Nassau Street, and also to allow a couple feet, actually five feet of additional height, maximum height, for any new development in order to sort of give more flexibility in terms of if someone wanted to have a more interesting roof line, or do some other design elements. So we, it's sort of a fine tuning of what we did earlier, I guess a year or so ago, with the, with the AHO 1 zone. So what you see before you is the area of the AHO 1 overlay, which is on Nassau Street near Charlton. This is a, basically, if you know where the large former and historic Princeton Grammar School building is in the center of the block, now owned by the university, this is immediately east of it, between that school, former school site and Charlton Street along Nassau. It involves, as I alluded to just now, allowing from the maximum height to be up to 50 feet from 45, as it stated now, and also to add Lot 27, which is that hatched rectangular lot that you can see in the sketch. It turned out, once we went, returned to the area and it studied it a little bit more, that because of circulation and the way the buildings are laid out, it makes sense to include Lot 27. We kind of didn't notice that the first time around when we set up this overlay zone. So I think this is a fine tuning and improvement to the AHO 1 zone, and that it's very consistent with our master plan, because the purpose of the overlay zone is to encourage more housing opportunities in Princeton, more affordable housing units within the town, having them be in a central location in Princeton, within walking distance of stores and services, and major employers like the university. It's all consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan. So staff endorses this as well.
And I'm assuming that this is, that this zone is like specifically was adopted in concert with the with the housing element of the master plan. Is that correct?
Oh, that is correct. And I'm sorry, I should have set that as content. This is one of the important sites where inclusionary housing has been regulated now, put into our code to encourage this kind of inclusionary affordable housing development. So this is market-driven investment that we're hoping to see along Nassau Street, and of course, it'll generate affordable housing units as well.
Okay. And I noted in your memo, you know, the reference to the historic structures along there, the structures that face Nassau Street that are, you know, roughly two and a half stories, most of them, they look, they look to be about 30 feet tall, or whatever. What are the implications of this for those buildings?
Well, the, one of the really wonderful aspects of the overlay zones as we design them is that important and attractive structures, such as the ones you just mentioned, will be preserved. So for instance, if a, if a project was to take place on this particular area, in this particular area of the AHO 1 zone, the new construction, new development would happen in the interior of the block, sort of, if you see that number 23 for Lot 23, in that general area, and it would be behind the existing historic structures. So I think it's a, it really is a win-win, and the way we want to, to grow Princeton in a smart way, in a sensible way.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Are there other questions for Mr. La Place, or anyone else? Mr. Chow?
Yeah, I got a question. How come the Affordable Housing Overlay doesn't extend all the way to William Street? You know, those other four lots there?
That's a great question. No, we, when we originally studied it, when we were working on the Affordable Housing Plan, these different locations for overlays, the character really seems to change as you go towards William Street. William Street is a much more residential street in terms of scale and the traditional use of the buildings than along Nassau Street. So we saw it as sort of a transition. And even though the university buildings start immediately south of William Street, those buildings that you see that are on the corner of Charlton and William, on both sides of Charlton, are really more residential in character and scale. So we were trying to not disturb that.
Other, other questions, or comments, or anything? I really appreciate your clarifying, Michael, the, the intent, you know, of you know, sort of stepping up the height as you get, you know, it's toward the center of the block. I was really glad to hear that. Okay.
Excuse me, on that question, is the height extension applied to the entire, to the entire area?
Well, really it really would affect where new construction would take place, and the overlay requires the existing historic buildings that front on the streets to remain. So it's sort of, sort of de facto, the height goes to the new construction, which would be towards the center of the, of the overlay area.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Good. So, so this is a consistency review, as we've, you know, done in the past. It's not a public hearing. I you know, wonder if there are other, other questions, other matters related to this? I mean, I understand it's a five minute, I mean, a five minute, five foot difference. It's a it's a very limited change in this ordinance. But are we ready to vote? Is my, about consistency with the master plan? If so, I would invite someone to move
I'll make a motion for consistency with the master plan. Is that right, Jerry? Did I miss anything?
Your motion?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Sacks, and seconded by Mr. Oakman. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item on the agenda relates to a project from which I must recuse myself. And Jerry, at this point, I know I need to turn things over to Mr. Cohen to handle the opening and continuance of this matter. Do I need to explain my conflict? I'm happy to do so. I don't mean for it to be a mystery.
You don't have to, but if you're comfortable doing so, it's probably a good idea.
I'm very comfortable doing so, especially since I heard, as, as others on the Board have, I've heard a ton of testimony on this landwin application. It's been many months since it was before us, but in that interim, an organization that I have a close affiliation with, the New Jersey Conservation Foundation, became involved with efforts to preserve another landwin property over on Province Line Road, and that was successfully preserved. But I understand there may be ongoing or future conversations about preserving this property as well, and I co-chair the Land Acquisition and Stewardship Committee of the Conservation Foundation. So I have, at this point, a very clear conflict. And so with Mr. Quinn being absent, normally he would take the wheel here. Mr. Cohen is a senior member of the Board, so I will turn things over to David and turn off my camera.
Thank you, Chair. So this application is the Landwin Development Corporation application continued from July 1, 2021, from the preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan for 725 and 823 Harrington Road, and 915 Mount Lucas Road, Block 1001, Lots 1, 2, and 14.
Um, hold on, David, I'm sorry. I am, I also recused from this a long time ago, so I, I am going to turn off my camera. Jerry, do I need to formally recuse again, or?
No, no, you did, it's fine.
Okay, all right.
Mia, Mia, there's no discussion. We're just, you don't have to take that action at this time.
Well, there's no action she has to take, and I think it's a good idea, turning off video.
Okay, bye, sorry.
So this is file number P1818-648SPF/P. And I am going to open the hearing, but then immediately declare that it's going to be carried to a date in March. Carrie, is that March 9, if I remember correctly?
17.
March 17.
March 17, thank you. So it's being carried at the request of the applicant, and there will be no further notice given. So those who are interested in this application should return on March 17. And with that, I think I can turn it back over to Chair Wilson, if she can turn her camera back on.
I was, I was just gonna add that, and certainly in the, in the absence of Vice Chair Quinn, I'm shocked that we're meeting on St. Patrick's Day, but for Mr. O'Donnell is equally shocked.
They lost Louise.
I thought it was a state holiday.
Yeah, Louise, Louise has disappeared.
I will, as long as we're filling time, will announce that I am shocked that I'm the senior member of the Planning Board.
Congratulations.
There's Louise. Thank you.
So I was actually sort of in, in purgatory or something. I was able to hear and see everyone, but I got disconnected, just as Mr. Cohen said, and I am shocked. And I thought, oh, I want to hear that part. Okay. The next item is trustees of Princeton University. This is a minor site plan with variance, East Campus Garage signage at Faculty Road and Fitz Randolph Road. This is Block 50.01, Lot 18.01, File Number
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, the notice is satisfactory, proof of publication and service order, and the Board has jurisdiction.
Excellent, thank you. I see we have Mr. DeGrazia and Mr. McCoy here. Michael, do you want to say anything before we invite Christopher to set the table?
Yes, thank you. Do I need to be sworn in now?
Yeah. Does we need to be sworn in? Did somebody ask whether they need?
Yes, Mr. La Place.
Oh, oh, yeah. Do you swear or affirm it? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give to be the truth?
Yes, I do, thank you.
So sworn or affirmed?
This evening, we have before us a component of the new parking garage that's being built on the evolving east campus of Princeton University. As you all may recall, or many of you, we first had a concept presentation on all the various projects that are, that are coming together on the east campus. And then we had a specific site plan application for the six-level parking structure that's under construction right now, pretty well along in terms of construction. At the time that we saw the parking garage, the specifics of the sign package were not fully developed. So the university stated that it would come back with a, with a application to address the signage, and that's what's before you this evening. You'll see that there are two general variances that are being requested, one for exceeding the area, the sort of permitted area of signage, because this is a very unique situation. It's a very large structure with various access points, and you'll hear about that from, from the university representatives. And also, there's another variance that refers to the illumination of the actual signage. So I think it'd probably be best just to let the university go ahead and make its presentation at this point.
And Michael, I guess the last variance would be there's two signs on the north elevation, and only one is permitted per facade.
Right, so, so it's, yeah, it's additional, additional area of signage.
Oh, that's an area, okay, rather than, rather than
Because we have a 16-square-foot signage limitation, that doesn't really
Isn't that 24?
Derek, do you want to, yeah, let's let Derek get
Derek, if you could raise your, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give to be the truth?
Yes, sir.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you. There's two issues with the two side, only one side is permitted per facade, and two are on one facade, although one's very small, and it's definitely needed. And the maximum size is 24 square feet per side. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so with that, Mr. DeGrazia, I would invite you to
Thank you. As indicated, my name is Christopher DeGrazia from the law firm, A Figury Drinker, Piddle and Reef, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. Michael, pretty much helped mine what I would have said in the introduction. Just to be clear, there's a total of four signs that are going to say Stadium Drive, I'm sorry, Stadium Drive Garage. And as Derek mentioned, there's a couple of variances, three of the size, three of the signs are over the 24-square-foot limit. All four are internally illuminated, so we need a variance for that. And then we have two of them facing the same, on the same facade, which we need a variance for that. So that's a total, those are the variances that we need. We have a short presentation, and with that, I would like to introduce and have sworn in Ron McCoy.
Of course, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give to be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to jump right into the presentation. Let me share my screen. Can folks see this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, you've been here a million times. For the record, you're Princeton University's architect.
That's right. Okay, so let me show you some images that describe the sort of application that both Mr. Place and Christopher have described to you. This is just to, as a reminder, the overall site plan, we're on slide, this is labeled Slide 1, that's after the title page. I think the most important thing to?
I'm just, I'm sorry, we'll mark this exhibit as A1, and as Ron will go through it, he'll identify the slide that we're on.
Right. I think what's important to point out here, since we're looking at the wider perspective, obviously, with internally illuminated signage, there could be a concern about how that would impact the neighborhood. And so you'll see on the next slide that the signage is primarily on the north. There's one that's east-facing, but you'll see all of the landscape and existing buildings to the east and to the northeast. So these are really meant to, the signage we're going to show you is really meant to capture the community on campus, but also people who want, who might be looking for the garage when they're close to the garage, that they know which garage it is, that they're at the right garage as opposed to the wrong garage. And so this is, and this is all an effort to try to make the campus more welcoming and inviting, and also to allow people who are looking for the garage to get off the streets as quickly as possible and into the garage. We're trying to help them find their destination as easily as possible. This describes where the signs are and the size of them. So we've got four signs, as has been discussed. One and three are facing to the north. Two is facing, it's on the side of the transit hub, and it's facing to the east. And four is on the elevator tower and the stair tower, and it's facing to the west.
And you're on Slide 2.
Slide 2, yes. Now on Slide 3, this is, the next slide is going to have landscape. You'll see the difference between the site without landscape and with landscape. But this is the one that is, removing the landscape allows you to see particularly these two signs. These signs are, the one that's over the entrance is, it reads as a dark sign during the day for contrast, and then at night it is illuminated, and it reads as a white sign. The one that's on the facing east on the end of the transit hub is going to look white during the day and white during the night. And the key here is to signal that this is the Stadium Drive Garage, and these icons are to indicate that this is a transit hub for buses, for cyclists, and also for parking. As I mentioned, the signage is internally LED illuminated on the letter faces only. Now on Slide 4, this is the landscape thrown into the presentation. And remember, from that site plan, there's a lot of landscape behind us here. So these are well-shielded from the neighbors. Now on Slide 5, this shows the nighttime illumination of the signage. Slide 6 is a detail of the signage as you're entering into the north entrance into the garage. Again, this is facing toward the soccer stadium internal to the campus. Slide 7, this is the one that does face to the east, but is well-shielded by landscape and by the Tiger facility. So this is on the end of the transit hub facing to the east. You can see the dimensions here. This is nighttime, not a big difference. Slide 9, we are now at the northwest corner of the garage, and you'll see the canopy over the transit hub and over the entrance. And that canopy has a much smaller sign on the edge of the canopy, which is also on Slide 10, shown here at night, as an internally illuminated sign. This one's much smaller, about five and a half square feet. Now Slide 11, this is the sign that faces toward the campus, toward Jadwan Gym and Athletic Complex. This one is elevated so that it gets above the trees, so that pedestrians and cyclists, who may have been on campus for an event and might be coming here for a bus pickup or something like that, may not normally, actually not know their way around the campus. Again, that's why we're providing the signage. The signage is not so much for the people who work on campus who know their way around, but these are really to make the campus more welcoming for visitors. So this one again is individually illuminated LED letters, and it is on the third level of the, actually the fourth level of the garage facing to the west toward the campus. Slide 12 is just an example of the kind of signage we're talking about, in the case I wanted to show an example of what these might look like. So this is the example of the nighttime and daytime view of a typical commercial sign that looks like black on white during the day, and then white letters at night. Now Slide, this is an oddly numbered slide. I copied this from another presentation, so it reads as Slide 28. It's actually Slide 13 in the sequence, but this is in response to a comment that we received in the staff report. Received the report after we had submitted our slides earlier in the week. But I wanted to insert this slide to address the comment. The comment was that the staff wanted us to explain how the campus pedestrian wayfinding system would be integrated into the garage. And what you see here is one of our new kiosks with the campus map that would be highly visible as right at the entrance, in and out of the garage. And then the next slide, which would be 14 in the sequence, although it's number three because it's grabbed for another presentation, this just shows you the types of signage that we have in that family of campus wayfinding. We have lectern signs for sort of mid-campus locations, and the monolith signs for points of arrival and major campus locations. And then one last slide, this would be number 15 in the slide sequence. It's not numbered here, but this shows the different types of maps that we'll have on those kiosks. The kiosk that we're talking about at the east garage is an overall comprehensive map of the campus with a full legend of all the destinations that will help people find their destinations. So that is what we're sharing with you tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. McCoy? I guess the only thing that occurred to me during your presentation was whether there will be, if folks are coming from out of town, or, you know, visiting team or whatever, coming from Route 1, Washington Road to faculty, there going to be some kind of directional signage at the corner of faculty and?
Yes, yes, there is already, for example, coming in off of Washington Road, there's already signage there that directs you to the parking garages, so that will be updated with the the new name of this garage, and it will direct you to turn right on the Faculty Road if you're coming into town from Washington Road. And then along Faculty Road, as you need to turn left, there'll be a sign that telling you to turn left to find that garage. So there will be those kinds of wayfinding signs on the perimeter of the campus, again, designed to get visitors to the garages as quickly as possible and keep them off the neighborhood streets.
Yeah, exactly. Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McCoy, Mr. O'Donnell?
Actually, I have a question, I believe, that Mr. La Place will be the best person to answer. On the north facade, there are actually going to be three signs. There are going to be two signs flush with the building itself, and then the transit hub wall will be perpendicular to the building. So therefore, that is considered a separate elevation and not part of the limitation of one sign per facade.
Maybe Derek would be the better one to answer that.
Derek lost connection.
Oh, Jim, do you want to jump in on that? I think it was all considered the north elevation, wasn't it?
It is all considered the north elevation.
Yeah. I think. So it was just, Christopher, what did you want to say?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think Derek's reporting only identifies the two, because if you're standing to the north, you don't see it. You basically only see the side.
Right, it actually faces east.
Exactly. So if you're standing in the east, you'll see it. If you're standing in the north, you see two.
You don't see it. It's only two signs visible from the north, correct?
Okay, so because it's not flush with the building, then therefore it's not considered part of that facade.
Well, no, the two signs, the two signs are actually the one that identifies the stadium garage over the entrance.
Right.
Plus the one that identifies the transit.
Right.
It's area. The other, the third sign, which is on the north side of the building, actually faces to the east.
Right.
It's the stadium garage entrance sign. So that is not considered on the north facade. It's more on the east facade.
Okay, that's the answer that I was looking for.
Good. Other questions? Ms. Sax?
Not a question, just a comment. As garages go, it's a very good-looking garage. I actually really like the front area that it looks like you're entering more of a train station. And I really like the lettering and the black and the white contrast, and it's a nice garage.
Thank you, and it'll be comfortable. So when people arrive and they're waiting for transit or, you know, getting on there, we should point out covered bike parking, but we did that in the Skars presentation. So, yeah, we're trying to make it very comfortable. Thank you.
Good. So seeing no other questions from board members, I'll open the meeting for public comment. This is a public hearing portion of this application. So members of the public who would like to speak, then please virtually raise your hand by clicking on the icon at the bottom of your screen. And we will see your hand go up and call on you in the order in which hands are raised. I'm not seeing any hands.
No, we only have nine members in the audience. We have a total of 27 participants.
Great, thanks, Carrie. Sort of slow-walking this in case anybody's having trouble finding the raise-hand icon. But I think we have straight up no, ah, Mr. Miss, oop, I saw a hand raised for a hot minute. I think it was Todd. I think it was.
Todd Cronin.
Yes.
I'll move him over, yes.
Bring him over. And I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so when Mr. Cronin is done, we will conclude public comment. Welcome, Mr. Cronin. Your audio is a little hinky right now. No, it's, okay.
That was fun.
It's a clever trick.
Chipmunks kind of situation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
Could you raise your right hand? If you could, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Todd Cronin, last name C R O N A N.
Okay, thank you.
Right ahead.
So I guess the question is, why is this one lit when the other ones aren't lit? So is there some, so it's not as if the other garage, I mean, there are some garages are lit, some are not. Why specifically this one? And I guess the question is, if, you know, there's an assurance that we're not going to see it, what if we can see it? What's, you know, this is going, going to be going 24/7 forever. If there's a lit, that's, if the light that, you know, spreads over the top of the building or trees or anything like that, what's the recourse at that point? And the other thing is, I'm not sure how does the variance work? I mean, you just, the size is, I mean, massively over the 24 feet, 24 square feet. I mean, is it just, just pick a number? It's quite large. What necessitates the scale? Is the scale seems very different from the other buildings? What's the rationale logic here besides aesthetics?
Well, it's not aesthetics. This is really about best practice for wayfinding. And the campus has a history of really not providing much signage, particularly for visitors. As the campus becomes more public, more visitors, more welcoming, more events, we want to improve our wayfinding. So this is, this is the part of the overall current wayfinding master plan. The design team that's working on our wayfinding master plan is also the design team who's helping us with the garage. And these are sort of recommended signage, size letters for distance. There are sort of rules of thumb for the number of inches in height in a sign for the distance from which it needs to be read. And these are no bigger than they need to be, but they're trying to get people to their destinations as quickly as possible. As I pointed out, these really are only facing to the north, which is the campus, and the landscape buffering, even in winter, when there are no leaves on the trees, the landscape buffering would shield the signage.
But there is one facing east, no?
Yes, but it'd be logically impossible to see it through the Tiger Building.
To see the sign, yes. I'm talking about the light, obviously.
The light is.
Logically impossible to see the light?
The light is de minimis. He will not see the light.
Okay. That's what I want to know. So there's, so this one's, this is just how it's going to be going forward. You, because I was wondering about the size, the size is just vastly larger than any other parking lots in terms of scale.
We haven't decided to go back and retrofit the existing parking lots, so I can't, I can't say if this is a sort of game plan for all the garages. I think each one would be context-dependent.
But the other ones are both, all the other parking lots that I, as far as I can tell, are smaller and not lit. But this one is much larger and lit.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the size. I'd have to go, I'd have to do some research on that, but this is the only one that's lit, yes.
I mean, I don't know. I guess, I guess for a variance, and it's a variance, and yet all the other parking lots are a completely different size, scale, and light. I mean, wouldn't there, I mean, wouldn't you have to make more of a justification for this? I don't understand why it feels arbitrary.
And we're just trying to do a better job.
Yeah, but is there literature? That's what I'm saying. You're saying it's best practices. Is there something we can look at that would suggest that this is the right scale for this? I mean, assuming this is going to affect the community as well, that's all my question. Considering it has nothing, has no relationship to the rest of the university, and you're asking for a variance, it seems justified to have something like a rationale.
So I want to just clarify one thing. It's, the variance is there for being internally lit, so you can have signs that you can see on light that are lit up. But instead of having lighting directing on the side, which will, you know, could have other impacts, this is very concentrated, and it's not even on the square. It's actually the letters. So in terms of illumination, it's fairly de minimis as explained by Ron. And, you know, it does have a function at night as well. So, you know, if you weren't going to lit it internally, you would have other lights on it to light it up. And this was the nicest way to make it look very sharp and elegant and fit into the facade, and that was the thinking behind it.
Right, I guess the question is, the best practices are so completely out of proportion with the law, that is to say that you need the variance for this. It's so totally, I mean, you're asking, you're tripling it, right? So the variant, you're going triple the size of it. The best practices are so completely out of, you know, relationship to the current law. Is that the case?
I wouldn't, I would not say that at all. What I would say is that the municipal ordinance does not address university signage, and that on almost every application, there are variances for signs because if you follow the size, it would look silly on a building, whether you're talking about the art museum, residential colleges, or a garage. or a garage, and the garage being the most important in terms of signage because you have a lot of people from out of town. So you have to look at the the size and scale of the building. And the architects look at that in terms of integrating it and creating an appropriate sign. And and our feeling is that this is very tastefully done, perfect in terms of the size and scale. And like I said, there is no ordinance that allows or looks at or adopts signage for university. It's the same type of sign requirements that would be for, you know, any use. And it's very limited when you have these larger buildings.
Right. Now I get that. It does seem a bit strange that you're the you wanted the the size and scale on the lit internally to the parking lot. So you're not even pulling him from the street. So I'm not sure what traffic you're pulling in at that point, since they're already basically sitting on top of the garage. Right? You've already turned inside at that point. You are right on top of it, that you need that that scale at that point. I I I haven't heard the rationale for it. I'm not against this. I don't I I see it. I just haven't heard rationale for it.
Mr. Cronin, that, thank you for your comments. I I think we we get the point. And I'm gonna follow up with a question about the illumination. I mean, I I felt, this is my personal opinion, that the presentation made coherent case for the size of the signage and I I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we're not talking Trenton makes here. But I am curious about the illumination and whether I think part of what Mr. Cronin asked at one point was whether this is a 24/7, will will the signs be illuminated through all dark hours throughout the year? Or is is it when events are happening or when school is in session or what, you know, is there some? Are there some times when the signs will not be illuminated at night? And this part two of that question is, can you speak to the degree of illumination, the the brightness, if you will, of of the signs from a distance?
The signs will be, right now, our assumptions is signs will be illuminated at night only throughout the year. Because there there are events on campus during the summer, you know, I don't think we would. I think, you know, because they're really not being seen, we want to keep them on as the default. In terms of the brightness, there is a a metric called a NIT, N I T, which is the the luminance of light, which has to do with one candle luster for every square meter. The sun is 6,500 nits for context. And that's important because you, if you have an outdoor sign and you want it to be, you know, like if you have an outdoor display and you want it to be red in sunlight, you know, like a video monitor, then those those need to be about 5,000 nit. This is probably 250 to 300 nit. So it's it's quite low. It's about the it's about the luminance of your of a of a high quality television inside your house. So they are they are seen, they're they're just seen against a dark background. They don't need to be brightly lit at night. So these are, these are sort of quiet signs. We, I would say we have larger signage on campus for donors. So this is not extraordinarily large. I I don't know what what size signage we have on our other garages, but these are not exceptionally large. The one foot 10 is the largest. And I think Whitman College is larger than that.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, and the rule of thumb, the rule of thumb is about why, actually, I better not say the rule of thumb because I'm not sure I have it right. But this is really a kind of recommended distance, you know, the people in in cars are moving at a speed. And you want it to be a little bit larger to capture their attention.
And when you refer to the 110, what was that a reference to?
That was the main, the largest sign, I think it was sign number. Let me check that. That was sign number one is one foot 10 inches tall.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, a comment and a question. You know, I, it's my personal opinion that the regulation regarding internally illuminated signs that's in our ordinance was really intended to discourage signs with an illuminated face. So, you know, if you think about bottle king or whatnot, you know, where you've got a big rectangle and the whole thing is lit. And that that's the the goal is to eliminate those. And I and I think it's largely an aesthetic preference kind of a thing. I think these signs are very subtle when only the lettering itself is lit. And, you know, from the standpoint of both aesthetics and impacts to neighboring properties or whatnot, it's very similar to what you would have with halo illuminated lettering. So that's part of the reason that I don't have a problem with the illumination variance. But I I do want to just verify, you know, would this lighting be dark sky compliant, you know, in terms of the environmental impacts?
Technically, well, you know, dark sky compliant is a is a generic term. Dark sky ordinances have have there's a different dark sky ordinance for a rural wooded site as opposed to an urban site. So this, it's there's no, there's no single standard for dark sky ordinance. Technically, people tend to think that dark sky means that lighting is all directed toward the ground, but even dark sky ordinances allow a certain amount of decorative uplighting. So this, I think, would fit into a dark sky ordinance.
I mean, is the lit surface at all recessed or is it flush with the the wall adjacent?
If you give me one second. Hold on. I came prepared. Can you see this?
Yeah.
This on the left is a there's a section through, say, the concrete wall, the the signage package. The letters are mounted to that with small studs. You can see the exploded axonometric on the right. You see the studs, you see a kind of channeled case for the letters. Inside of the channeled case is the LED modules. Outside of that is a acrylic layer, diffuse layer, and then an opalescent acrylic face that allows it to be black in the daytime and white at the night. So that's that's the technology that of the fabrication.
We should mark this as exhibit eight two.
And so that front opalescent acrylic face is flush with the face of the letter.
Yes, flush with this can, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Cohen, or?
That that's it. Thank you.
I did not close the public hearing. So seeing no other hands raised, I will formally conclude the public hearing and will continue with questions and comments from the board. Other questions? And if there are none, would someone like to move approval of this minor site plan with variance for
Approval of this minor site plan with variances. Thank you, Ms. Sacks. With pleasure. Is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by Ms. Capizoli. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli? Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texardi?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So Carrie, since Mr. Quinn is not here, Mr. Oh, never mind. I trust you. I was wondering whether Mr. Taylor was, I guess you've got nine yes votes and
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
But I was ready to say yes.
Thank you, Jack.
In the background.
Thank you. All right. Well, thanks, Christopher and Ron. We appreciate it. And when is this, is construction already underway?
Yes.
Been over there in a while.
It's it's
Oh, of course. I'm sorry. I I don't even, I I can't imagine why I thought it wasn't. I know that it is. Okay.
August, August of 2022, it will be open.
Good. Okay. Well, then, thank you. And you're not going to be back next week, right? So
What did you say? What did you say?
University free week.
University is not, is not on the agenda next week, are they?
The university, but I believe Mr. Dugretzi.
For Christopher's back next week.
Well, I can't wait to come back.
Happy New Year.
See you next year, Ron.
Happy holidays and happy new year.
We actually hope to get the resolutions on next week if we could.
Do have some resolutions on next week's agenda.
I think I think ESC is, I'm hoping to finish that tomorrow and get that to you, Christopher.
Wonderful.
91 prospect is is a bit more of a challenge because I'm working on a brief at the same time. But but I'll see what I can do on that.
Wonderful, Jerry. Thank you. I I got you on video, so you know.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Good night.
I move, we adjourn.
Night, Mr. McCoy.
And Jeffrey, thank you for your service.
Yes.
I think it's a, I think it's a record for 2021.
Jeffrey, are you gonna be here next for next week's meeting?
Yeah, isn't there a meeting next week?
Yes, there is.
You're gonna be there. Okay.
It's the continuation of 21 Wigan Street.
Yeah.
Well, and also we have another ordinance referral, do we not?
Yes, and that's an important affordable housing overlay revision. So you might want to vote on that and then bow out if
Not a, not an overlay, just affordable housing.
My goodness.
Affordable housing.
At this rate, we'll be here next week.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody. I'll I'll see you next week. Well, actually, but moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Julie because I saw her raise her hand.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
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 Again. Good night.
Good night.